Good evening, everybody, and thank you for tuning in. And those of you who are here for the Avery County Board of Education April regular meeting, we'll go ahead and call to order, and I'll read our ethics statement, which states, "Board members are reminded that it is our duty to avoid conflicts of interest and the appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of this board. Does any member of the board know of any conflict of interest or any appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before us at this meeting? If so, please state them for the record. If during the course of the meeting you become aware of an actual or apparent conflict of interest, please bring the matter to the attention of the chair. It will then be your duty to abstain from participating in discussion on the matter and from voting on the matter." We could... Pat, would you do your invocation, please?
Yes. Heavenly Father, we praise you for what... for who you are, and we praise you for what you have done for us, and we praise you for what you will do for us. We are so thankful that you loved us so much that you sent your only begotten Son to earth to die for us on a cross. And we know that the grave with which we will all someday go is the same grave from which he so gloriously resurrected. And we thank you, Father, for loving us that much. And we also ask for blessing on the last six weeks of school that we have here, and we're so thankful that we're able to get our students back in school. And we just ask that you would be with the children, help them to stay healthy, and be with the staff as well. And we just thank you again for all you do for us, and help us to show your love to the others as often as we meet them, for we pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Stand for the plate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I have a motion for approval of tonight's open and closed agendas?
So moved.
Thank you, Jane. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Kathy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Could I have a motion for approval of the March 9th, 2021, open and closed minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Jane. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Pat. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Could I have a motion for approval of the October 13th, 2020, closed minutes?
I'll make motion.
Thank you, Kathy. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Dr. Brigham, would you do your superintendent's report for us, please?
Yes, I'll be delighted to. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, today has been a very exciting day, and I greatly appreciate your time. The board started early this morning at 8:30 with refreshments, and then straight into revisiting our district strategic plan, our financial status. And I'm very grateful for Mr. Jeffrey James for taking the morning and sharing his financial wisdom and some updates with the board, and then this afternoon revisiting our district strategic plan and determining our path forward from here. I'm very grateful for the board's time, and I look forward to the processes we continue to pursue ahead. So thank you very much for your time today. We are also in the final stretch of the school year, as Ms. Edwards noted just a minute ago in her eloquent invocation. It's... we're coming around third base and reaching for home, so we have a few short weeks left, and I'm excited to have all K-12 students, pre-K-12 students, in classes all week this week. High school students return to five days of instruction. Tomorrow will be an in-class instruction day for our high schoolers, and I'm excited to have them in some normalcy per se environment for the rest of this school year. And we're very, very excited to have them back and look forward to a positive completion of the academic year. We have a lot of celebrations, and a lot has transpired over the past couple of months throughout Avery County. And it leads me to our next session, if you don't mind. I'll go with that front session next. As you all know, we've been in the middle of a pandemic for over a year now. Who would have guessed back in March of 2020 that we would still be seeing vaccinations and COVIDs and quarantines and so forth? We've been very blessed in Avery County to have tackled this crisis or this pandemic from a team standpoint. We couldn't have made it this far without the leadership and support of several key players, including Mr. Philip Barrier. From day one, Philip Barrier has never hesitated to make sure kids had what they needed, our employees had what they needed, the citizens of this county have what they need. And it is an honor this evening to have him with us tonight. And, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to come up, I would like you to join me at the front, as we recognize Mr. Barrier. Come up here, sir. There are someone firsts that we can celebrate. This is my first pandemic, sir, as a superintendent. And this is the first award where someone in Avery County who has had substantial contributions or significant contributions to our staff, students, and our school system. We love you because you're a partner, a passionate partner that has the best interests of the kids of this county and the people and the citizens of this county in the forefront of your decisions. We started something, and you're the first recognition to something we call Friends of Education in Avery County. And it's an honor to be with you tonight, to present this to you. And, Mr. Brigham, would you like to read that?
I would, Mr. Brigham. Philip, we do appreciate that. Dr. Brigham says we do love you, too. The Avery County Board of Education. Come take this off. The Avery County Board of Education, Friends of Education Award, first quarter 2021, presented to Mr. Philip Barrier for your ongoing and generous commitment of time, support, and service to the students and staff of Avery County Schools, April 13th, 2021. Bye.
(applause) (inaudible) without mentioning this, during the vaccination charge that we had, I didn't know where to start as a superintendent, seeking vaccinations for our employees. I didn't have to seek a solution. This gentleman came up with it in partnership with the Health Department and provided vaccines to all of our employees that desired to be vaccinated at the school locations, rather than having to leave their work post to come out and get both vaccinations. You made that happen with the support of all the county officials here. We appreciate that.
Thank you. A pleasure to serve, guys.
(applause) We're going to have a running quarterly award plaque in our boardroom, but I use the first one.
Thanks. I'm honored. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks for coming, Phil.
Wow.
Very good. Very well deserved. Philip is a... been an advocate long before he was even county manager. He has always supported Avery County schools. Stephanie, did we have any public comment?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Before we go any further, we would like to wish Stephanie a happy birthday.
Yes.
Sweet 16, she said.
That's right.
So happy birthday, Stephanie. We appreciate all that you do for our board and your always keeping us all on track and keeping us well-fed and all with our documents in order, and we appreciate you so much.
Thank you so much.
We'll move on to our discussion agenda, and under Leadership for Innovation, we have some important dates. I'll just let you take that from there.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, our next regular meeting is Tuesday, May 11th, and it's kind of shocking to say that's the last board meeting during our regular academic year, so we have one more before we see the departure of staff and students for summer break. Our last day of instruction and the end of the fourth nine weeks is May 27th. That will be an early release day for our students. Required teacher work day will exist on May 28th, and we look forward to our high school graduation on May 29th, 2021. And I need to applaud the efforts and support of Mr. Jesse Pope, who has extended another partnership this year to allow access to McCray Meadows, the high school planning team, which is comprised of graduating seniors. And with the support of Mr. Ricky Ward, they're looking at the structure of high school graduation, possibly with two groups being structured to maximize the amount of people that can be in there within the guidelines that were given. So we're looking forward to a very successful high school graduation on the mountain once again. It will be an optional teacher work day beginning May 31st through June 7th, and we will go into our extended learning requirements for summer school on June 17th, June 7th shortly after that. So that completes the important dates.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to our 21st Century Systems and the 2020-2021 summer programming, and we have Mr. Ellis Ayers with us tonight. Welcome, Ellis.
Good evening. How are y'all doing tonight?
Good. How are you?
Good. Two different things are in your packet. There is some have-tos, and there's some we plan to do. I'll be honest, when I first got on the agenda back before spring break and putting that together, it was the have-tos. And that's the piece about summer school programming. And that's just a short little two pages of information, and that's revolving really about testing. Accountability at DPI is requiring us to ask, how are we going to handle any type of testing over the course of the summer? And that's what that... it's got 2021 summer program plan. Basically, it gives an overview of the fact that we're going to offer it for all students, the times that it's going to be, the fact that the grade levels, it's all encompassing, with some potential testing involved. You see, it actually begins in third grade, because those are the only ones that accountability is requiring this form to be signed off on. And so that's the piece that would need to take action tonight. But let me back up and talk to you a little bit more about the last-minute insertions that you got right before your meeting about what we plan to do. And that is the color sheet here that is here that's got Avery County Schools in the front, it's got summer school over on the right. Summer school is then... it's coming together very quickly, because over the course of spring break, House Bill 82 passed, and as of today, Saturday, along with Cindy Brigham and Megan Pollard, on an update as to what those requirements happen to look like. The timeline of what we have done, when the third nine weeks report card went home, we sent home summer school letters with students that were being recommended by their schools to attend. And so we've been collecting that information coming back. You get that, the information, the tentative numbers that have come back both by school as well as collectively by grade level on page two and three of that staple document. We are going to plan two three-week sessions of summer school for students Monday through Thursday. House Bill 82 requires for us to have 150 offered hours. That means that it's not 150 required hours for students, but it's 150 hours for us to offer program. And so we have offered those hours within our invitations to students that have become coming back. Based on the information in terms of coming back, we are looking at some tentative staffing possibilities, somewhere in the neighborhood of about 15 staff for... or 15 teachers in elementary. That's going to be housed at two different locations, both at Freedom Trail as well as at Newland. And then having another, at least three staff for middle school programming, one in each core area, and that's going to be a combined program down at Cranberry. Summer school does have... while it does have to be offered all day, we're really not looking at it as school. We're really looking at it as enrichment and catch-up time. It's got to be about engagement. Our kids have had a tough year, and so we want this to be an opportunity for them to have a chance to be together, be social, have fun, but also be involved in a structured environment with learning. There does have to be a focus on literacy, math, and when you get into grades three through eight, it has to have a science component, but also there's a required enrichment component. There has to be an enrichment included, as well as physical activity every day. We've begun talking and having conversations about how can we put those activities in place, field trips. I've talked with both... I talked with Bobby Willard and...
Jerry Moody.
Jerry Moody and Alicia Hicks today about how we can incorporate both the WOW program into some of their trips. We talked about maybe going out to a Crawdads game, utilizing the dive-in. We've also talked about coordinating with the YMCA and looking at how they can partner for kids that need care after school, hours after 3 o'clock, and also utilizing their facilities. It's a very fluid plan, as we, I think, will probably get bigger as we go forward as opposed to smaller. In terms of funding, that funding was just released for the program over spring break, a combination of redo achieve funds, and then they've also told us that we need to use our ESRS funds. So we are going to be presenting this plan some to Advents tomorrow, and then we've got another planning group that's part of our ESRS group to put that plan in place to how we're going to move forward with selecting staff and getting the specific programs lined up. But the idea is to offer those 24 days, academics in the morning, and then doing some enrichments in the afternoon, as well as doing a fair amount of field trips and fun activities to keep those kids engaged. It has to be a fun engagement time, because engagement's the key, and it's about stopping a slide and then really building the momentum for next year. Any generalized questions or specific questions? It's a lot, and it's a lot coming together in a hurry. But like I mentioned, House Bill 82 just passed at the tail end of last week, so all of those details are coming out. We will have to submit a plan to DPI that says 30 days before the end of our school year, which is the end of this month. We have to use a template they've not yet given us. We're supposed to have a meeting next week as to what that template's going to look like. But here's the general plan for what we've got in place for the 150 hours.
And I'm sorry, Ellis, you may have said this. When are we going to offer it to all students?
What we'll do is, once we get these particular teachers lined up, we'll look and establish our class sizes, and then see how much space that we've got in there. And then if we have a huge request, then we can look to see how much more additional staff that we can... may need to employ, and how much staff we have available.
So not all students... all students... okay. I guess my question is, and I know it is a state mandate, so there are certain students who have to get an invitation. All students, though, even if any student that wanted to come may not necessarily be able to.
That is correct. DPI has told us to prioritize based on the students that are at risk first.
Right.
And then staffing availability.
And staffing availability.
Right.
So staffing would determine whether or not a kid that wasn't considered at risk could come?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Ellis, at the middle school level, you're just looking at these numbers, you have to have a math, an EL, and a science teacher, so it doesn't look like your numbers are good, so there would be lots of room there at the middle school level?
Correct. And if those numbers come up, then we can also look... plus you. Also look to add additional staff as well.
But if that number stays low, you'd still... like, for that sixth-grade number, you'd have to have three teachers?
No, no, no. That's not by grade. That's looking at... tentatively based on the numbers that we've got, is one sixth-grade teacher that's math that would see sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade.
Okay.
An ELA, sixth grade, seventh, eighth grade. And that's just based on the numbers that we've received so far.
Okay. And so then... so then, so academics in the morning, then primarily those?
Doing some extra activities. Jerry mentioned coming in and doing some specific activities, science kits, maybe using some of our own staff to do some STEM-type hands-on activities, doing some outdoor kinds of things, also utilizing our gym space. But it's not going to be traditional school all day long.
Well, how does this affect retention for some students? Will some students, at the end of the summer school session, will a decision be made, and it's in their best interest to be retained? Except for kindergarten, I don't think you can retain kindergarten.
Kindergarten, if they attend, the rules say that they cannot be retained. But otherwise, it's at the end of the summer school. The principal has that decision as to what happens to be that plan. We did have some teacher or some parents that filled out on the form, I'd rather not be involved in summer school, even though I'm being recommended, and I'd like to look at retention. So we have had a handful of folks that have already started to have that conversation.
But they will be tested at the end of summer school?
Yes. The state is going to require... what we have today is requiring a test at the very beginning, as well as a test at the end of the program. We also have reporting that has to take place, I believe it was in January is what I saw today. A report, we'll have to go back to the state, of the number of students that attended and what their tests were, what those happen to be. And it's the... the test is going to be mandated by the state in terms of what we have to provide.
So even if a student has been virtual all year, they can still come to face-to-face instruction in the summer?
Absolutely.
And we won't have virtual in the summer?
No. Well, I won't say we won't. It won't be part of this program. We may have some students that are also have some other opportunities given, but it's not our... that's not included as our summer program.
As our summer program.
That's an additional enhancement that could be used. We've got some online subscriptions. iXL is one, that we can monitor some students' progress through that with some extra enrichment, but that does account for summer school.
Okay. Great. Any other questions, comments for Ellis?
No, but you still have to have a different form that the state... this is the form we signed tonight, or we approved tonight, but you said there was a format coming from the state?
They're going to give us a template, and I don't know if that's board-proved. I can't imagine that it is, because we're not going to have a meeting between now and then, and we're the same vote statewide, I think.
Okay.
But they're going to give us a template to fill out for our plan.
Thank you, Ellis. Rebecca, could I have a motion for approval of the 2020-2021 summer program?
I think of a motion.
Thank you. Pat, second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other questions, discussion, comments? All in favor?
All.
Thank you, Ellis. Appreciate that. Next, we'll move on to the Avery County High School construction update with Mr. Rob Johnson. Rob, welcome, and we appreciate you being here tonight.
It's always nice to be here. Just everyone had a nice spring break. Good to be here, buddy. I handed out the notes, and Stephanie had a good site visit this morning, and again, it's encouraging. It's starting to look more like a completed building and not a fragmented bunch of parts. So I'll just go through the... critical items in my mind. There are the storefront, being window wall. All of the lower level is complete, and the entry doors, it was so gratifying to see those being installed this morning at the far end of the classroom wing. And then the other lower-level doors will be installed this week, and the upper-level storefront are anticipated to be completed by the end of this month. The brick veneer, again, very gratifying. See the pictures that will be attached here in a minute that topping out when I was there, getting the last few courses of masonry in. Beyond that, there's just one last remaining column to unwrap, which they say that we'll get to tomorrow. The exterior metal panels, they're slated to be done during May, excuse me, April, end of mid-May, and those are really integral with the storefront, the banding in the commons, if you will, and some of the panels on the admin building, the details in the brick metal, if you will. The installation is in tight coordination with the storefront, and they match, and it's really kind of an integral assembly after that. Array for the interior metal studs and framing being 90% finished. The hard tile for the restrooms, wall tiles this week, and floor tile will follow after that. Case work, it's really a waiting. The building needs to be conditioned in terms of, you know, humidity controls and air conditioning, so that when the casework gets installed in all the classrooms, and science obviously has the most casework, and that's anticipated to start in the May and run into June. And then the terrazzo, you know, all the halls, it's a fair amount of terrazzo in the commons. That is due to start mid-May and run through June for completion. They do have a pre-installation meeting scheduled with the SOE next week, and they'll do some moisture readings in the slab. There's ways to mitigate the moisture, but they need to test it to see what the level is, to see how much or how little mitigation they need before they start that really, really critical installation. Finished hardware, again, for June and July, and then the permanent power sometime in May, but the new transformer's going to start Monday of next week, so that's, again, an encouraging milestone. And then, again, in my mind, mechanical systems, the end of that line is testing imbalance, and they're looking at that being done around the end of July. So those are the highlighted points, and they somewhat correspond to the pictures on the second page of the handout. To the left there is the lower level of the exterior, and the right is the lower level of the interior. The two at the bottom there are the topping out of the brick facade on the science labs in that area we know dear and near, where the... so the nailing wall has been removed and only stubbed out there. And the third page has got the, again, the construction access, the in-between of the building 100, which will come down, and then the backside of that classroom wing. Picture at the bottom of page three, this gentleman enclosing, installing those doors, and that window wall is not far behind it, and the doors will aim there to the right of that stairway to go in next. So the most gratifying picture from being in the site this morning was, you know, this corridor, the no-man's land that been in their time. It's always just been total chaos between the new building and existing building, but I characterize this as there's light at the end of the tunnel. It's happened that horse lap, be a real floor, but again, was a really good milestone. And then the picture below it is looking down into the commons from the main level... oh, excuse me, the mid-level, again, with the lower-level storefront all in place. And then, last but not least, is a, you know, picture of the main facade of the building, again, technic to look like it's supposed to look.
You mentioned the doors and windows, Rob. Just a quick question. Are the doors and windows going to be completed this week? Will we have all the doors and windows for the exterior installed this week?
Yeah, they were saying on the lower level. That's what...
Okay. Because I was going to say, if they have the terrazzo assessment for the slab moisture, it's essentially those exterior doors and windows be closed?
Yeah, fortunately, the, you know, the technology's really progressed, that the reading is really just to see what it is, and its ability to mitigate of... if it's a little or a lot, so it's... but, you know, the terrazzo, since it's so broad, that's their kind of most difficult here remaining coordination item to get all the parts, because it consumes a lot of area and it, you know, limits access, so...
And that'll be done before the casework's brought in, right?
The casework is, again, slated to start into May, run into June, and so it'll be some overlap there between that and the terrazzo. But, you know, those classrooms, they're, you know, they're all the same. They'll fill out rather quickly. That job has always been, as you know, the complexities of digging into the hill and then with the admin and the commons. Otherwise, classrooms are just repetitive units, so there's, you know, it gives you a little bit of encouragement that, once they get rolling, they can fill them all up, so...
You just want to make sure that our casework doesn't get impacted because of the lack of terrazzo being completed, or vice versa.
Yeah.
Terrazzo having to work around casework.
Yeah. But meeting with the SOE in terms of pre-installation meeting next week, that'll be, you know, whether they'll coordinate all the sequence and all the delivery and parts, so...
I guess the $64,000 question, we're still on track for students come opening day.
Is it going to be down to the wire? You know, I'm still optimistic that they can beat the August 5th date, because in my personal opinion, they need to give y'all a little more lead time to get in there to get set up, so... but, you know, as we get, reference to rounding third base, I'm not sure we're rounding third base, we're approaching third base, so, you know, it's encouraging. So... but again, it's coming together, and I think as school lets out, take a, you know, really hard assessment of where it is. And there are ways, I mean, this county's wonderful to work in, and with Philip Barrier, Tom McGurleson, Fire Marshal, you know, there's ways to get temporary occupancy, so you can get staff and set up prior to public being, you know, granted access, so... we're going to work. We've been at a lot... we're going to be with it until the end of the line, so... but we're just cautiously optimistic. But this morning is probably to do as judged by day, so...
Okay. Any other questions for Rob?
That's good.
Rob, we appreciate that. We're looking forward to it. Thank you. Moving on to our policies for first reading, we have four. Anything in particular that you'd like to point out on those, Dr. Brigham?
No, sir. Technically, it's generally technical.
Thank you. Moving on to our policies for first reading, we have four. Anything in particular that you'd like to point out on those, Dr. Bridgen?
No, sir, technically, it's generally technical additions or corrections and they're highlighted in yellow in each of these policies and these are for for first reading, I recommend approving on first reading.
Oh, okay.
For information purposes.
Right. Okay, yeah, we'll include those next time. Okay. We'll move on to our capital outlay maintenance updates. Jeff James, Jeff, good to see you. Again, we've kind of got a bit of a day with you.
Before I begin, thank you so much for your time this morning. I appreciate the opportunity to to meet with you and discuss all issues pertinent to the district, so. So tonight, your capital outlay report in your packet, again, they sound like broker record, we're kind of where we have been, most everything's completed, waiting for summer, except for mulch has been ordered for the playgrounds to be refreshed here. We're looking at about a three-week turnaround time due to COVID. Apparently, I was teasing Mike Cannon, I said, you know, well, I guess you have to take the temperature of the bark before you can mulch it. I don't know, but but he did confirm with me today that that has been completed and they will be scheduling today for the entire maintenance staff to go out and put mulch out on playgrounds as that comes in. Also, at the bottom, I've updated your maintenance request numbers and Ms. Edwards, I did add under the column total, the date as to when these requests were actually first logged, since February 6, 2019. So since you asked that question last month, I was curious. And you can see, you know, the the boys are are still at it. We ended last month with 36, we brought in 69, ended this month with 43. So they had seven work orders that come in, they weren't able to get to out of the 69. So they're working at it. Unless there's any specific questions, God bless you. We are on track with the one major project that is left to be done, which is the above-ground storage tanks. I've been working with High Country Nasal on that. The tanks have been ordered and we are set to begin demolition of the tanks here the day before we actually get out of school. We get out on Thursday, the 26th, 27th?
27th.
20, I believe it's 26th. But that Thursday, we'll actually begin demolition, we're going to allow them to come in on Wednesday and begin that because Mitch can fill up the fuel truck, get all the buses filled up, fill up the fuel truck and we'll be ready for fueling buses on the last day of school. We've got an arrangement with Mitchell County, the cause of House Bill 82 and the summer school requirements that we have been so graciously given. Obviously, we're going to be running buses at the same time that we're not going to have fuel. So but Mitchell County has agreed, they'll let us take the fuel truck down and fill up our fuel truck there and then they'll just bill us for the fuel until we get ours back up and running. So we'll be able to continue operations with just a little bit of a hindrance, but not enough to to cause us to be concerned. Okay?
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
While you're up there, if you we'll move on to our surplus property.
David Reeve mentioned to me a few several weeks ago now, a concern about some of the technology that is in the high school and asked what we needed to do as we are making our plans and putting all the logistics together for moving into the new portion over the summer. And specifically, the smart boards that have been purchased and have been installed throughout the high school. Most of that property has been purchased over time either with federal funds, grant funds, or state dollars and is therefore an active inventoried item. And in order for us to dispose of them or do something different with them, we do have to ask the board to declare those items as surplus. And I provided you a little bit more information with this one than what we typically do when we request to itemize something as surplus specifically for cause. This is the first time in a while that we've had equipment that was purchased with federal money that we brought before you to be surplus. That has to be handled differently. Once I get the authorization from you to declare a surplus, then we'll have to go through the process of filling out the appropriate paperwork and sending it to D.C. and requesting the U.S. Department of Ed to release that equipment so that we can either transfer it from the original program that purchased it into another program or if the equipment is actual beyond its useful life, then to go through the process of disposition. Okay? So these are all smart boards that are located in the 100 and 200 pod. There are a few that are also located in some of the other areas of the high school. So we decided we'd just go ahead and put them all on the list, take care of them all at one time. The plan presently within the renovation budget is these items are going to be replaced with smart TVs. So so we will have to work with the technology department to determine, can we first relocate these to other schools or is the technology outlived its useful life and therefore we're at a point that we need to go through Article 160A and the disposition process.
Okay. Thank you. Do you want me to take action on this? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bridgen. Thank you, Jeff. Could I have a motion for approval to surplus the smart boards?
I make a motion.
Thank you, Kathy. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jane. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you so much.
Again, Jeff, you'll talk to us about the 2021 budget amendment.
Budget amendment number five. The budget amendment number five, for your consideration, tonight will add $471,497.67 to our overall budget. The additions are coming to us both in state and in federal allocations. We'll go through these quickly. If you have any questions as we go, please do stop and ask. But the first first page, or actually, it's the third page in the packet, the state fund, The lion's share of that coming from the general state fund and $174 coming in from school technology. We've had some additions to our non-instructional support for substitute cost, $174, as I said, for technology due to the interest that we've earned on that account. We've received an additional $28,000, or actually, this is not additional, we finally received our original allotment in PRC 29, which is a behavioral account within the E.C. program. It it took the state a while this year to turn around that specific grant, so we we have the funding and we just need to allocate the additional dollars from what we had at the beginning of the year. In PRC 56, our transportation allotment, we received an additional $12,007 this year in the last allotment allocation. And I have tried to adjust that account based on current spending, to try to line up the accounts with where we truly are as of today, rather than just drop the money, straighten the fuel or tires. We did, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, I'm I'm, I'm sorry, six. Six accounts specifically due to COVID. And we discussed this back before Christmas, that there was, we had all that COVID money that come in and we had to spend it by the end of the calendar year, we would not be allowed to use it after Christmas. And I, at that time, I said, I'm afraid we probably won't be able to utilize all of these funds. I said, I hope I'm wrong. Well, I was wrong. At the last minute, the state did open up those accounts, gave us a lot more flexibility and right before leaving for Christmas break, we were able to move money around. And so all of that has posted based on how we moved it and how we spent it. And so PRC 124, 125, 126, 128, these are all reflecting those last-minute changes to exhaust that money so that only pennies of it was left on the table.
Good job.
Thank you, Jeff.
PRC 131, textbooks, textbook waivers, we discussed that a little bit this morning. Textbook waivers, at this present moment, the principals have requested or have actually with their school improvement teams transferred $157,357 out of their textbook accounts into the digital resources accounts. And as Ellis mentioned earlier, and we have subscriptions for IXL, I Ready, several programs that are out there that we're presently using, that's where this money is going. It's coming out of textbooks to pay for those digital subscriptions. And so that's state funds. Next page moves us into our federal funding. It's $134,745.67. Some of these are additions, there's a couple that are actually reductions from what our planning allotment was. PRC 49, we received an additional $151 from what they told us that we would get and that's in our itinerary pre-K E.C. program. There's really nothing we can do with that $151,000 or $151 because that program pays a salary. Salary's already budgeted, the person's employed, so we'll just let that money sit there and carry over it to help pay salary next year. PRC 60 or E.C., federal E.C. program was reduced almost $8,200 this year from what they had anticipated that we'd receive. PRC 103, which is improving teacher quality, it was reduced 1423 from the planning allotment. Primarily, those are due to ADN decreases, let's say. PRC 104, which is our English and Second Language or LEP program, they received an additional $724 from our planning allotment. And then PRC 118, PRC 118 is an E.C. program, but more than that, DPI uses that to pass money to us to pay for a DPI behavioral support position that's housed out of Avery County to serve the whole Western Resa. And so that $143,000 for 84, that's basically an allotment that's a DPI area, it's just we're the fiscal agent for that. So that's just, you know, we've we have an agreement with DPI, we have to negotiate what the budget will look like. They have to ask us to make sure that they have to abide by our salary rules. So the local supplement, they have to abide by longevity, anything that's there, they have to abide by our rules. We have to negotiate all of those numbers and then sign a contract or an agreement. It's not it's not a contract, it's just an agreement. And then once all that's done, they'll drop the funds and so it's really nothing that helps us other than we have that expert in our backyard rather than having to call them from Ash County or Polk County, have them come up to help the E.C. program. And then the next page, it's another federal budget amendment. I put this one as a separate one because this is all COVID funded. So this is separate from our normal federal program. There's four accounts here, digital curricula, 165, 167 is an E.C. grant, 169 is specialized instructional support, and 170 is supplemental instructional service. The digital curricula, we brought an amendment to you last, two meetings ago, I mentioned to you that David Reeve had applied for a grant, received it. Well, when it all was shook out and said and done, they gave us $342 more than what they initially told us we could have. So and that will go to pay Apex, or Apex program is what the grant was written for, so. PRC 167, which is an E.C. children's grant, Megan Pollard wrote that grant to provide services for extended school year. So sitting right beside what we're going to be doing with our summer school programming from House Bill 82, we will also be utilizing COVID money to help pay for E.C. services at that same time. PRC 169, specialized instructional support, that was the grant that was written to provide an additional counselor in the school district. So we were awarded that grant. And then PRC 170 is a grant, it's actually, it wasn't a grant, this was something the governor actually put out there, it was guaranteed allotment, we just had to go through the hoops to get it. And the only thing is, we went through the specifics as to what the governor said the uses of this funding was, the only thing in the list that applied to Avery County was tutoring. So it's additional funding that our schools have to provide tutoring. At this late date, I don't know if we'll utilize it this year, but it is available to us beginning August 16th, so they'll have some tutor funds guaranteed from day one they'll be able to utilize. And then the last page is a restricted local fund, Fund 8, $11,371. And we've received some additional donations from the Park Plus Club that we need to budget, $10,000 or just shy of $10,000. And then I need to budget $1171 out of fund balance to go to our Blue Ridge Vision Support Payment. That was a payment that we actually received prior to closing out the school year on June 30 and we weren't able to turn the payment around and send it to Mailin. So because of the way the audit and school books were, that money actually reverted to the big black hole of fund balance. And so technically, in order for us to then turn that payment around and get, which we've already done, we've already paid Mailin, but for us to officially do it, we have to take it out of fund balance because it crossed fiscal years. Okay? So in doing that, again, that's a $471,497.67 increase that will take us to just a little over $42 million this year. Any questions? I know I run through that really fast.
I recommend board approved budget amendments presented, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Bridgen. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Could I have a motion for approval of the 2021 budget amendment number five that Jeff presented?
I'll send it.
Thank you, Pat. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Any other discussion questions? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. And again, for our, we have approved change orders.
And just the the change order that is officially on the agenda tonight was already approved by you through poll the week before we went on spring break. However, I do want to clarify that there was an item that is in the change order that was not officially listed in the memo that I sent you and that was an additional $9,899.97 expense, but it was already approved by the board as a change directive where we had to reroute the sanitary sewer. And what we ended up doing, we just, we informed branch, we got, they didn't have the final numbers together for us to officially do it as a change request. So what we did is we gave them the authority to spend up to X amount and to proceed so that it wouldn't hold up the project. So it came in under, I think we gave them $16,000 is what the projected cost was and it came in $101 under 10, so I mean, 98, 99. So they held, we told them to hold it as tight as they could. So they they did complete that work. So it wasn't on the original memo essentially because I didn't have the final dollar amount at the time, but since it was prior, previously approved, it was already set so that we so that we could add it to that final document. If there's any questions on any of the change orders that you've received, you know, please call me, email me, come by. I'd love to discuss anything with you as far as that goes, as much as I know.
Thank you, Jeff. We appreciate that. Any questions for Jeff?
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Like to, uh, thank Luke Barber from Neighbor General for being here again. Luke, thank you. We appreciate you for being at our meetings. With that, could I, are there any board member comments? Any other information items?
I'm sorry, y'all want to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Yes. And could I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Kathy. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Pat. Any discussion? All in favor? With that, then, could I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Jane. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. All in favor? Thank you. We appreciate everybody being here, and those of you who joined us online. Hope you have a wonderful week, and we're looking forward to the home stretch here. So thank you for being with us tonight.